So, I really appreciate it. Let's go to discussion of concern, possible action. Larry Stutler regarding the deed to the Foremore Business Park. Gentlemen, you have a copy of this in your folder.
Thank you, Commissioners. I took the liberty of sending you the information yesterday so you could have a chance to review it prior to my appearance tonight. We ran into some, an issue with the deed as we're trying to bring a particular deal together and get it finished, actually, and that's with the DOA's Department of Highways and their relocation to Business Park. Back in February, February 12th, we had a press conference that detailed that particular transaction and the benefits that would bring us to county. So, I was worried with that unless you want more information. But what we ran into is they were trying to, they being the DOH, which is drawing up the deed, they ran into the problems that I shared with you on page six. They consider a problem. Page six of the deed says that the grantor and the grantee to hereby agree to covenant this conveyance is made solely to the purpose of promoting development and advancing the business prosperity, the economic welfare of Lincoln County, West Virginia, and its citizens. And in that, in the event that the Lincoln Economic Development Authority does not comply with said purposes within five years of the date of this conveyance, then in such event, the real estate herein conveyed to the grantee, the Lincoln Economic Development Authority, and not subsequently conveyed to other parties by the grantee, will revert to the grantor, the Lincoln County Commission. This document was executed in 2007. So, in 2012, the clock ran out on that. And when the people from Department of Highways brought it to my attention, I immediately went to Ron Salmons to ask his legal advice of how we should approach this before bringing it to you all. And Ron supplied us with this letter that I gave to you. And he feels like that these particular actions, and actually, there's three that we need to take, would allow this deal to go forward. One, he says that I believe that the simplest resolution to this issue is for the county commission to officially proclaim the LEDA's compliance with said covenant and condition. That's the one I just read too. The second part, I asked him to call the attorney with the DOH and speak to him directly because what we were doing is their person was talking to their attorney and I was talking to Ron, and then we'd talk to each other, and then we'd have to go back to our attorneys. It was a mess. So, I said, "Let's just get the two lawyers talking. We don't want to get in the middle of that." And they hold fast that they want the county commission to sign off on this deed conveying property to them. In addition to us signing it, they want the county commission to sign it. They'll settle for nothing else. So, that's the second action of the deed. The third, as Ron states, was for future simplification needs. I believe the county commission execution of a quick claim deed containing language of the EDA's compliance with prior deed covenant and reversion clause will resolve this issue. That's what I'm here for tonight, to ask for that action.
So, they're going, they're basically wanting that, I mean, I know one thing we talked about there, but they're basically wanting something to say is their road.
Roads, it's their property.
Their property, right.
Yes. They're, they're, we're in an agreement with them, well, was, to convey a large parcel of property that's around the old Performance Fiber Glass building. It'll go to DOH. There's about 14 acres in there. It starts just to the side of the Performance Fiber Glass building and stops short of the King Hunters Building and takes in some wetlands and stuff. They wanted to control that. What their plan is, is to move the maintenance garage from West Hamlin, build a new one in the park, along with a conference center, a meeting center that'll hold 100 people so they can have the regional DOH meetings here. Then with that agreement, we asked that West Hamlin not be left barren, and they've agreed to move a yet unnamed, officially unnamed apartment in there that will take care of, that will inhabit that property. And that's completed. According to their word, that should increase our job base by about 31 to 40 jobs. That was the...
That was going to be my question. Why are we giving, we're giving up the land?
We're giving up the land. We'll get that. They will be responsible at their cost for taking all the utilities over to that particular parcel and making it so that we can hook into it along the way with other development. Okay? There is, and I termed it, I was thinking, how would I say it? There was casual conversation that they would also do some work on that road, that far out Lowerman River, that would enhance the road. That was not anything for sure, but I'm sure it'll be taken care of well with them being located.
You know, I've always been of the opinion that we should be looking at private industry and things like that there.
Right.
But do you feel this would enhance our ability to do that?
Indeed, it would.
Okay.
The, one of the things that we face, and you Commissioners certainly know this well or better than me, in our county and trying to compete with those private industry placements is infrastructure. That's one of our main issues. And it's a barrier. We've encountered it ourselves trying to develop various parcels. It increases the cost of the development. And so, with them providing that infrastructure and actually running on the infrastructure and being responsible for that payment, as well as letting us use it along the way, to me, it gets those, like the water further out Lowerman. But we can't act on it with the deed the way it is because, like I said, it ran out and I've quickly done the math, we hadn't noticed that in the deed, and it was drawn up in 2007. And so, five years would've been 2012, there would've been a problem that we didn't know existed.
So, we need language, we need a letter stating...
That we've complied. The EDA has, the county commission will officially proclaim the LE, the Lincoln Economic Development Authority's compliance with this covenant.
We need a motion to that.
Yeah, we need, that's why I was asking you to say.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and move, we go ahead and give the letter of compliance or construct the letter of compliance.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye. If that being unanimous, motion carries.
Second, the second thing Commissioners would be, I would think, the way they're reading this and the way their attorney's requesting for the county commission and the EDA to execute the deed, they're actually drawing the deed up. We will have it reviewed by our attorney, Ron Salmons, to make sure everything's fine. But we need someone authorized from the county commission to sign off on that deed, this one deed, on behalf of the county commission.
I'll go ahead and make a motion without precedent, sign off on that.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If that being unanimous, motion carries.
And the third issue would simply be the, what's called a quick claim deed, and that was Ron's language, containing language that the EDA's compliance with prior deed covenant and reversion clause, and that resolves this issue going forward for other development. That's his suggestion, that that deed be made up. We would have that drawn up and brought to you all for review if you would so desire.
What kind of timeframe are we on? Something in order to make it happen quickly since we're doing this quick deed assuming?
This particular deal with the DOH can go forward now with your all's last vote. The vote authorizing the commission president to sign this deed, I will call the people tomorrow at DOH and tell them it's a go. Prepare the deed, send it to us, and our attorney will review it. That will be happening tomorrow. This quick claim deed is basically for future activity. So, there's probably not as much pressure for time, but while we're on the subject, I want to go ahead and bring it up so we don't have to go through this process again.
It could hold us up in the future.
Yes.
And you can, I mean, I'll go ahead and motion we approve the third thing he was talking about there as far as a quick claim deed.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If that being unanimous, motion carries.
The only thing I'd like is maybe have Ron run that by our prosecutor to make sure he takes a look at it.
At the deed.
Yeah.
So, we're talking about 14 acres. Are we getting any, EDA getting any money out of this?
We're getting utilities, we're getting jobs. And we're getting that...
And that'll be staying in the deed where somebody, what we're actually getting for this property, so that players may change?
Yes. The way we was going to approach it, Scott Pepplin tells me that the language is going in the deed concerning the utilities and that we can hook into them.
Like pump station for the sewer yard, that's a big issue.
They're going to do all that for their property, but we can utilize that line when it crosses through there and have taps, as they would call it, into it. The other thing we looked at is a memorandum of understanding. We want these jobs and we want something placed in West Hamlin. That was a major negotiating point for us. You know, people over there didn't want to see the garage go, justifiably so. We don't want to be, we want, we want to develop everywhere. And so, there is a division that they have in mind to bring in. Apparently, there's a lot of Lincoln County folks already working that division. And that will bring them home to work. So, we thought with that deal, it's a pretty good deal.
Basically, the EDA, whatever, came to this agreement with the DOH as far as the making the covenant.
Yes, sir. The board has reviewed it, approved it. They've actually went over the exact land that's designated and everything in session with the foreman president.
Is there any possibility, I guess unofficial discussion or anything, that where the, with all the equipment that I've perceived that Department of Highways would have, that they could develop their 14 acres, that they would maybe make some other acreage more easily developed as they have there?
I ask that. While you're in there and you're going across through there doing utilities, you try to drop the blade and clear some brush for us as you go across through there, and we're going to try to work that out with you.
Make their place look a lot better.
Well, it'd look a lot better, see? That's exactly, that's a good ploy. And, and it would, for that matter, but yes, that has been discussed. We've discussed so far as when you're having your regional meetings at this center that you want to build there, and that's to bring in people from Logan, Putnam, Cabell, Boone, all of them will come to Lincoln County. Will you be getting food from local people? Local suppliers will actually be taking care of the concession there, and the answer's yes. I mean, we've been brought in from somewhere else. That's part of our job, is to try to increase the business activity of the businesses we have here. So, we covered that.
While you're here and standing up, the next, I think we have all the actionable items to discuss.
Yes, you do. Yes, thank you.
I put this on the agenda about, you know, the way the EDA to help with the development of our sewer projects. I wanted to talk to you all about that. I don't know, have we commissioned anyone to move forward with the Allen Creek project or with maybe a project in arts? Have we, have we basically said, "Hey, we want you to head this, these projects up and to go with them"?
No.
Well, if, if we haven't, I would like for us to, because I feel like that the sewer projects, it's economic development, and why don't we utilize the EDA to help us get these projects going? And I would like to, if we could maybe officially act on this and say, and ask the EDA, and I know this, I mean, I, you know, I know I've just kind of thrown this out there at you, but you know, that's something that, I mean, whenever you look at the, the things that we need in our county, you know, sewer is, that's economic development.
That's premier.
And, and it would be nice because we need it on both ends of the county.
Well, I think if we're going to do that, I'm fine with that because I do think we need to start looking at this this way. You know, I think you need to include those, as far as getting your work up, those existing sewer projects, look at their needs and possible expansions, things like that, as well as new sewer projects. So, probably involve, if you guys involved with the sewer fence that we have in existence now and things of that nature, and see, and get a good idea as far as what they, maybe develop like a five, 10-year plan. I think probably a 10-year plan probably would be more local, more tight as far as what you, where you want to be. And then take all the players involved, working with the EDA, and develop a strategy just like we did with the countywide water plant back many years ago.
Right, right.
And that way, I've, it seems to me like until we put it on a schedule, it never gets done.
You're exactly right.
And I think that's, well, it's time to do that with what Pinal County's trying to do on their end with Allen Creek and things like that. You know, I don't know how close they are as far as funding or anything of that nature, but I do think this needs to be looked at as a whole county, to look at how we can improve the infrastructure we have existing.
Right.
And also look at what new infrastructure needs to be developed and look at funding sources and things like that. And I think that's better done, just like we did with the water plant, get all the players involved and, and have the EDA lead the discussion as far as, and then, you know, keep us up to date on what's going on, and then that way we will know, because I know the water monies and the sewer monies are different monies as far as we go to platform and things. And we've always kind of tried to, our priorities always been to protect the water for the people, save water for the people, and we always, and I still think that's our number one priority as far as water services.
Yes.
But I, I do think it's time, if we're talking economic development, we're going to have to take the bull by the horns and, and get some things done, put us in position to work. If that economic development is available, is, can be done, then we need to be able to do it.
Exactly.
So, I think, I think it's a, it's a good idea from, from what I can see.
Well, I'd like to, because with this, I would, I would foresee after, you know, just like with what you were talking about, you know, developing a plan and encompassing, you know, the different, you know, all of the sewer projects that we have going in the county right now, and potential projects that we can have, is to commission the EDA to, you know, to actually do this, actually go and say, "Hey, listen, we, we need to set up a, a public service, you know, for our sewer in this particular area, and we need to go ahead and, and start seeking funding." And, and the EDA can do that. But I think that we need to give them authorization to do that and commission them to do that for us.
And of course, I would like to take this to the board.
Well, of course.
And get, which you're a member of, of course, but, you know, get everybody involved. I, I think it's, I would be excited to try.
Well, I think what Commissioner Benny says about making a comparison to water, I think that's very important. I think it's important to have input and have those people part of the present sewer boards that we have in Pleasant, New West Hamlin.
Right.
Because there may be places they need upgrades. I know we just had to help Pleasant, New West Hamlin recently, and it may be that they want to extend their, you know, expand it or whatever. So, I think it's important to become a whole county plan, look at all of it.
Right.
So, can we get a, a motion to...
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If that being unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next on our agenda, we have review and appointment, review and appoint a member of the Lincoln County Board of Health. I'll move that we appoint Joanna.
I'll second that.
All right, got a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If that being unanimous, motion carries.
We hope you like the job.
Next, we don't have any unfinished business, and we got a new gentleman here. But next, we have new business. Gentlemen, have you been able to look over the new business? And if you have, and you don't have any questions or discussion, I'd like a motion to approve of it.
I'll move.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If that being unanimous, motion carries. Next is Commissioner McHans, Commissioner McCann.
Just a couple lines. One, I was thinking with the Yoffie Tower and all the, down through the years, we had different people, but it seemed like one of the main people that always wants better communication in that particular area was Rudy Thomas. So, if there's some way that we build this, if we could recognize Rudy in, in that, I think it'd be a proper attribute for him. He just worked so hard trying to get, you know, some type of better communication. He always didn't, not only, you know, cell phone, but also in other part, department things, so just a thought. The biggest concern I have is the building across the street here that the county purchased a year ago, sold from the Methodist Church to develop it into a judicial annex. It's my understanding, the building is sitting there now without heat and has been for years. I'm concerned about buildup of mold and things that will deteriorate this, the bench that's in that building in the future, and also, we've had some discussion as a commission about how are we going to get that building renovated and at least in phases so that the family court judge could occupy and start using and eventually magistrate. I think it's a concern, of course, as I wind down, with certainly, I don't want to leave here with such a burden on the commission to make this happen, but I do believe that we discussed this last year in the budget meeting in March, and we discussed it since then, that we did put, if I remember correctly, $250,000 in the operating budget this year for that facility, and also intent, at least my understanding, that there'd be $750,000 carried forward from the March budget. And I don't believe that happened, and it's just my concern that we've got, we spent a half a million dollars, the county has, to purchase the building for that intended purpose, and it just, I bring that to your attention because I feel like it's as important for storage for other elected officials here in the courthouse. Not only does it provide that, but also gives the commission that this space to run its meetings and other meetings throughout the month, and it also opens up this restroom issue out here that we tell people to go upstairs and use a public restroom. And that's strictly because the family court judge, and rightly so in some instances, he would not agree to have that usable to the public, the fact it's going to be the restroom he had to use, and I can understand that side. But there's other restrooms in the building that are private, and, but he chose to do that, and that's how we end up in this situation of having this closed off. And I hear lots of objections to that from the general public, especially older people and handicaps and those things. So, it's just one of those things that there's a way to solve it. I think the intent of the commission was, when we bought that building, was to get it renovated and make it usable and have plenty of storage so that other elected officials could run their officers properly. So, I know we've had some issues between different elected officials on this space and the space out in halls of family court areas, so it's just one of those things that I would request that you as a commission, and if I can do anything while I'm still here, us to do something, resolve this issue. Thank you.
But trust me, is that the heating units and everything working over there? I mean, the deed, if they're not working up?
Well, I don't know about the heating, but the air conditioning looking like.
I think the heating is working.
Because I'm just thinking, we don't want that to go through the winter without having it.
We did last year, I think.
I'm pretty sure we turned it off before, during last year as well.
It's just one of those concerns that's been, I've just been trying to wait and see if we can resolve it, and I don't see much movement, and I just bring it to your attention as something that we need to, not that disappear.
I think one of the reasons that the grant was denied this time was that there hadn't been any work done, or basically that was one of those, what they said in that grant.
Well, you know, we're under a, sort of a ruling from the Supreme Court that we are inadequate in our spaces, how we got into this thing, trying to resolve that, and they gave us some leeway time to develop a plan and come up with an alternative. They are not happy with what we're doing down here with the space. And I know that it's easy for them to say, and it's hard for us to pay for, but it's our responsibility as a commission to provide a space for the judicial system. Don't be new to it all the time, it's our responsibility. That's all.
I, I don't, I don't, other than I want to thank the Commissioners for the work they've done on getting the monies for this, these cell towers. I mean, I think it's, I want to thank Alan and what he's done. I mean, this is something that we've looked at for a long time, and I think this is just another step in the direction we need to go to develop our infrastructure in the county as far as harnessing communications and things like that. And I do this as, when I had conversations with Congressman Ray Hall and, and contacted Senator Rockford, they understand the needs that we have here as far as the safety issues involved, not having cell coverage in particular areas of the county, especially there's a deal with illnesses and injuries and things like that. And I think that, being a physician, I always look at what I can, what we can do to better help those type of thing, you know, get people safer water to drink, make sure we've got the ability to contact emergency services if they need to have that. And also, developing sewers is, is important for the long-term health of the communities and as far as what, how they can develop. So, I want to thank all those people involved with that. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Well, a few things I want to discuss. What I'm doing is, I actually have this on my phone. I didn't have the files with me, but I have access to them. One of the, one of the things I'd just kind of like to touch on with what Mr. McCann said, you know, we do have that building there, and we, we did have the, the talk of the $750,000 to try to appropriate that money, what was left over from our coal severance. And with that being said, one of the things that, when we were looking at our budget, and I'm sure that you guys remember, when we got to our water line item, you know, we didn't put anything in our water line item, and, you know, and one of the reasons for that is, you know, I didn't know of, of anything that we had to pay, but of course, I knew. After looking at that, after going through and talking to Region Two, we have about $525,000 that the commission has committed over the years. So, one of the reasons I think that I haven't been very active in trying to, you know, move some of this money into this courthouse right now is because we committed those monies prior to moving to Leve. And these projects are starting to come, you know, come to fruition, and things are happening. So, we, you know, we have $200,000 committed to, you know, alcohol bulger, $50,000 to Francis Creek, $100,000 to Mang Hearts, and, you know, the extra is going to Lowerman River. So, we have these projects, and these projects are active. So, you know, we have to have that money if we, you know, commit to something, we have to have the money to, to move forward. But that's not a sticking issue. I think, you know, we need to move on the, on the courthouse, and I think that we'll do that. And, you know, we do need to get the, we need to get the heat going, you know, I mean, it's an asset for the commission, and I think that's something that we need to do. But, you know, I think that we need to do that and have priorities and be financially solid and stay that way. Next, I'd like to say, I really appreciate all the work that the commission has done, Doc, Mr. McCann, for, for the cell phone towers. You know, it was a pretty big initiative. Speaking of Rudy Thomas, it's kind of what I call it in my area. I call it the Rudy Thomas Initiative. Rudy was, whenever we were getting the signatures together, the people in the community, Rudy was at my house every day and calling the house every day, telling me how many signatures that they had got, and, you know, trying to move forward. Have we talked to AT&amp;T? Have we talked to Verizon? I mean, all kinds of different things, and it takes so mu, it takes so many people to get these things going and get these things together. And, you know, and I want, I want to thank Alan Holder, I mean, because once we got all this stuff together, we got these, you know, the signatures and paperwork, the letters from AT&amp;T, the political figures, just about everyone that we could think of that could write a letter, wrote a letter for us. And, you know, he entered it into the docket, he did basically the rest of the work with the applications, and I commend you for that, and I appreciate that. But, you know, we have other things that we need to do. I think that this is a big step, bringing cell phone service, you know, in, you know, these particular areas, but, you know, we need to make the initiative to move down the road. And, you know, and I think that I would like to, you know, work on, you know, getting services at the dam, Mud River Dam, and that would really bring people to the dam. And it's a, one thing that you can think of, it's a safety concern. it's a, uh, one thing that you can think of, it's a safety concern, you know, there's people down there swimming, down there boating, fishing, and there's no way of communication if somebody gets hurt. So I think we need to move, um, to try to get some cell phone service in that area, and, um, going from Ranger down through Hearts, uh, we need to, to move that way, and really, uh, mobilize the people down there, maybe, I mean, and even do it the same way that we did it ago, you know, let's get our signatures, let's get, let's get these letters of support, and, and let's go with it, let's just, you know, let's just run with it, I mean, the only thing that they can do is say no, and that's okay, as long as we're asking, we're in good shape. But I, I really, uh, Doc, I'd like to see if you can mobilize some people down there and, and maybe we can go ahead and get, get started on that. Um, last thing that, another thing we met about the, uh, the farmer's market in Yawkey, um, they picked out a, a wonderful, it's, it's, it's a really, really nice design schematic, um, starting to get some numbers back for that, on how much that would cost, uh, I really think, you know, the EDA's doing that, and, um, really, you know, moving forward, I'd like to, I'm gonna send some pictures in, maybe we can get them on our website, so people can see that, and see what's happening in that area. Another thing is, uh, and you all, I think you all received a letter from the, let's see, hold on, I have to pull it up. You all received a letter from the assessor, um, about two or three weeks ago, and he was talking about our, basically our Lincoln, Lincoln County line, talking about our, um, the correct maps, 'cause I know he's been doing the G, the GIS, and he's been mapping just every parcel in the county. Um, one thing that we, that we have, that I have noticed, is, uh, is we don't have a welcome to Lincoln County sign like every other county, as you're coming down Route Three. Um, I don't know what to do, I don't know how we would go about doing that, um, do you all have any recommendations?
I think we could, we could probably talk to the, the Sacramento supervisor, maybe we can handle that, or would...
I think there's some type of sign probably, I, I've come down on thirty-four a lot of times, there's a couple of beautiful sites out there, if you had something, well, and you went to Randolph County, Duffell County, they're very, very known rock, you know, unique sign.
Sounds like a built right there outside of that dig.
Good point.
You want to figure out what it's there?
What I can do is...
Well, there's, there's not even a standard green sign.
There's not a green sign, I mean, there's nothing there that...
I'm not talking about a Chuck Yeager monument, I'm just talking about a...
Yeah.
There's no sign, and there has been some dispute on where the county boundary line is, but I think with, um, the USGS maps that we use on the GIS, it shows exactly, those are surveyed lines, and I think that it would be easy to locate a, um, Lincoln County sign based on those maps.
Is Mr. Rangy still over to West Ham or that? Is he?
I'm sure. I attempted that at one time to get a sign put there, and I was told that it was a hot potato, the DOH was not going to touch between the two counties, because they knew that there was a contested issue, um, I brought it to their attention fifteen years ago, me and Mr. McCann went to the Boone County Commission meeting and kind of got crucified over there with our prosecutor.
I think I was that one too. I remember, I remember getting crucified too, I think.
Um, so...
Is that, is, I mean, is that the deal, I mean, you know, but, I mean, I mean, they have a, there's a Boone County sign.
It goes all the way back to the days of the Civil War, and when the state, when the boundaries were done, it said that the boundaries would follow this hilltop, this creek, this valley, with the exception of this piece of property owned by this particular family. That's in state codes, you read, read it, and then in the forties, when the USGS boundary lines were done, the legislature, I think in nineteen fifty-three, approved the USGS topo maps and quadrangle maps as the official county boundaries, Boone County says they never knew that was done and that wasn't correctly done, so if you go to the area where the new trailhead is at Ivy, gentlemen, that's in Lincoln County.
Right, yes, one hundred percent.
Yeah, it goes to Allen Market, he had spray paint on the road over there.
The, uh, there's currently a Boone County sign that is maybe two to three hundred feet past Laurel Ford going west toward Madison, I'm sorry, east toward Madison, and, um, based on the USG ma- USGS maps, that is inaccurate.
Yeah, we know that, I mean...
Yeah.
But we just need to fix that, and I mean, you know, we're wanting to go by the USGS maps.
One thing is, and the standard, the standard is the USGS maps, I mean, regardless of whether Boone County wants to recognize that or not, that is the standard on the map.
Do you think, um, you would do, just to talk with them about it, or do you think we need to really put it on as a motion for the next meeting to address that?
I think you have to take the, I think you have to take the active approach and let them disprove it.
I still have the original maps that were brought to us by the West Virginia State Tax Department at the time, and it shows all the parcels of property that, um, are currently taxed in Boone County that reside in that territory, and I...
I have those.
And they did plastic Mylar overlays and everything for us, that's still in my basement in a box, and it shows, and it's clearly...
Yeah, you've got the creek there, canyon, one side's actually, and the other one's the other side's...
It's clearly ours.
Well, we need to, what we need to do is fix it, I mean, that's the whole issue. We need to fix it, and, and, you know, and, and it would, it would be nice if we, you know, everywhere that there is a place where you come into a county, that's where their signs are.
Well, and again, the, the current Boone County sign is not in the accurate spot.
Right.
And there is no welcome to Lincoln County sign, and I think the important thing to do is to recognize the accurate boundaries of our county.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to put, I wouldn't want to put a new sign up in the wrong place.
Well, it creates a huge issue, especially for law enforcement, and when people call nine-one-one, when you send someone, you know, a Lincoln County deputy goes out to an area that's not his, or Boone County deputy goes out to an area that's not theirs and gets filed in the wrong county, and, you know, firemen can put water on the ri- on the, on the, on the, on fire wherever, and so can parrot mags, but when you get into the law enforcement issue, that's where we run into several issues over there in the past.
Well, we have, we have accurate maps, I mean, this is some of the stuff that the sensors printed off, the GIS, um, so we do have an accurate accounting where, where our boundary lines are, but we, I would like to see if we could contact the DOA to put a sign up where the, where Mark...
You know, I, I think, I don't care to talk with them, I think what we really want to do is do it as an official motion from the commission that made at the next meeting to draft a letter that you sign it to them, requesting a sign at the boundaries, not only maybe on Route Three to Thirty-four, just on Charles.
Well, you may want to, you know, we got the issue going in, in the hardest area, Furrowburg, where they got Logan Lincoln on both sides of the...
That's more of a, I think it's, where the sign is currently, uh...
It's up at the Lincoln line.
But that's accurate based on the map.
Right, thanks.
The issue there is that it comes back into Logan County, which is a different scenario, but...
Yeah, it's about falling to the river.
This, the way Route Three is, and I'm not saying it's not an important scenario.
I understand.
I'm just saying that it's a different scenario because people are being taxed, uh, in, like, what is that, Tony's, the Tony Editions?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but this, there's about one point five miles on Route Three that is contiguous Lincoln County, that is by the sign, you would assume that you're in Boone County, so you're not going into Lincoln back into Boone City.
Well, I, I think we need to put that on the agenda for the next meeting, more aggressive officials.
Should we, let's look?
I'd say, in, if you go back to this one point quarter mile, whatever you're up through there and go to Horse Creek, isn't there a, has in the past a large coal company that did lots of mining that would have, had been in Lincoln County, but actually Boone County got credit for it?
It's in, uh, the, I, the old Ivy branch, and if you go on, uh, the GIS system, the old, I mean, there is definitely some man-made gerrymandered lines there, no doubt, and I don't know how long they've been constructed, but...
Here's the, but, that's what you're talking about.
There's no natural boundaries to support where those, uh, political lines lay.
Well, I think we're on the right track by getting the letter, the commission put on the agenda.
You might clarify in that letter to ask them to place the sign at the correct location, because highways has what they call straight line maps, also we found out, a straight line map doesn't match the GIS maps, but the straight line map determines where the county line sign goes, and that's where they've got, you can see the color of the pavement change, and you can see where Lincoln County quits maintaining and Boone County starts maintaining.
Right, well, it's, uh, it's an, it's very definitive on that map as to where...
We're right, we're a hundred percent right.
All right, well, we'll just put that on the next agenda.
Can I say something? I do home health, and I have, it's divided into counties, that's how I know, like, when I'm going out on my boundaries, and I say, like, I'll be in there to another county, so...
So you've been doing that wrong the whole time.
Well, if I'm being questioned, I'll say, where do you pay your taxes? But a sign helps me know when I'm going to another county.
I think that ultimately is a question...
And that doesn't work anymore.
That's right.
Well, listen, I don't have anything, wait a minute, I gotta, just Mary gave me something on that paper, what's that yellow paper?
Oh, yeah, um, October seventh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, October seventh, October seventh, remember, we, we commissioned the, um, Conservation District to help us with the, the flooding issue, uh, we're having a walkthrough on Tuesday, October the seventh, at ten o'clock, we'll be meeting back here in the back parking lot, we'll have a travel with us, um, there's gonna be a lot of people that's gonna be going on this tour, and, uh, we'll be talking to a lot of people, and they're gonna be collecting data, so it's a good, something that's good that's happening in our county to try to help us with something that we're having. Anyway, gentlemen, I don't have anything else, I move that we adjourn until...
I'll say that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
With that being unanimous, motion carries.
Just for some information for the people here after this...